Right, good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the audit and governance committee. I am councillor Barry Dearwood, I am the chair of the committee. My vice chair is councillor Antonell in my right. Before we start, I might actually remind those present this evening that this meeting is being launched on YouTube. And also I'd like to remind them it's the best question when they need. No question is a silly question before you discuss that. This is the first meeting where a lot of councillors, it's important everyone to be excultable, ask the necessary questions. Then also I should make sure that your phones are on silent or switched off. And we've already established that all questions of the councillors will be at the end of each presentation by the office for the reception. We'll move to part one of the agenda, the agreements. As is known for us members that were present at the last meeting, the minutes will be signed as soon as we happen with that.
Agreed.
Are there any apologies?
Mr Tom Seaton, chairman from council.
Do any members wish to declare any interest in respect of any of the items on the agenda?
Can you just go back? I thought we had some earlier apologies.
All the apologies we have. Three apologies from Helen Segal, South East London.
There's a download.
And the handover as well. Any other apologies about that? Any other apologies? Thank you. Right, has it said that any members wish to declare any interest in any of the items on the agenda? Yeah? Are there any questions for members of the body? Right, conclusive limit is we now move to part two of the agenda, the agenda items. Item on the agenda this evening is the external audit strategy, known around them, 2233, which starts on page five of the agenda pack. I like that bit, I'm going to write it tomorrow. Would you like to present that to the board?
Good evening, my name is Mark Suresh, I'm here to represent the council as we are appointed external auditor. And I am the person responsible for the signing of the change and conclusions. Appreciate there's some new members here today, so I will take a slightly different tact I would do with this pack, just to take through some of our responsibilities. That I can give you some really good context. And so, as part of the process, we start off with a strategy, and strategy is, let's say. When we think of how we will approach it all, if I take you to page nine of the pack. Which is the engagement responsibility summary. And it's, it'd be quite helpful for me just to set out what we do. So the work is set, is prescribed by the code practice on international standards. Essentially, there's a legal framework that sits around the work that we do. We are responsible for issuing an opinion on the financial statements, so if you're familiar, that's fairly consistent across corporate entities. And that's a true fair view. Moving round to the right hand side, our conception is that we're responsible for identifying people who are not, that is not our role. And but should something come to our attention, the committee, we do not go out looking. Carrying on around the wheel, there are wider responsibilities in local and public audit, but you don't want to stay in a corporate environment. And those things such as electors that are allowed to raise questions and may respond to them. There's also powers such as public interest reporting, special recommendations that all of the authorities should use by them. And then carrying around the wheel, there's something called, we have responsibilities around a thing called value for money. Now, this can be, when it is, perhaps misleading in some respects. So for clarification, you do not provide an opinion on whether this council operates based on money. We issue a contract to assess underlying arrangements. I've come on to that a little bit, but essentially about looking at the building blocks to underpin how the council operates, providing a view on how those operate. The audit team, it comes as all public sector audit specialists and comes, it was a set aside there. If I next take you to page fourteen of the pack. So page fourteen of the pack leads to the timeline. And essentially our work goes over four key milestones. We do a planning risk assessment, we look at underpinning systems and controls. Where everything key accounting issues might be. That flows into an interim work where we get into the unlikely detail. So we'll do the work, we'll try and understand that how systems and processes that underpin financial statements work. That is looking at all these controls and how those may impact financial statements. And that allows us to issue this plan, we've done enough work to issue a plan. After that, we go to a theme work stage, we really get pretty lots of testing. Or looking to be shallow, whatever the grand October this year. And the next area I would take you to, I'm going to talk to you to page eighteen. It's delivering an excellent work, we can't report every single record, so we never finish our work. So what we do is we take an assessment of where the financial statements could go wrong. What's the biggest areas the accounts? And we set aside three areas. And these are presumed areas that we believe we need to spend a little bit further time on. We call them significant risks, they're just big areas to focus on. The first one is called management override controls. This is a predetermined risk in every audit, in every organisation, no matter what entity they are, no matter where they are. It's a, it's an assumption that should management, if they're in a privileged position, make an override control to make them. So we design tests specifically to address that. I am not saying that we're, we think management are, is a presumed risk everywhere and therefore will always be this. The second area we look at is we spend time looking at the local pension line. Pension line, it's a simple financial thing, it's very, very big and very, very complex. Lots of judgements, lots of estimates, lots of actuarial experts that have been able to do that. Because of that complexity, this area can go wrong. So we spend some time looking at the valuation of that one. Excuse me, the third area that we look at and we spend a very good time on is the valuation of land in the building. And again, this is complex, involves experts to provide judgments and secure the estimates that underpin that work. And so we believe it's appropriate to spend more time looking at those, because again, small areas, a small change, judging up quite a big, quite pushing difference. If I step back, those three areas are fairly consistent with every other two. The reason why I say that is that in the best possible way, it means that you're not overly special. There are no special considerations in areas of concern that we feel will really need to delve into. So in terms of risk profile, we sit in what I would call the average risk profile. And this year, there are two areas that we will take a further look. We don't believe they create significant risk where things could significantly go wrong, but they are areas that we think need to be dealt with. We call those areas of more focus. So we can look at the accounting that goes around the compilation group kit, now we'll look at that. And because it's complex. And the authority's inputted a, put in a new financial ledger. So again, we just want to have a look at what processes and controls were inside that. If it's a backup, well, it is the numbers that's back there on the side. So we'll take a look at those. The following pages that place in there, just going to deliver it in more detail about specific tests that you will. And I wasn't going to propose to go through those, but essentially it's there, I'm sure it's, you know, the other plan we've included in the plan. Page twenty-four of the pack talks about the framework that we apply on the value for money side of work. Now, fundamentally, it falls into a series of sequences that is forever live. Because you never know when something might come up or should draw our attention to. So we do also a planning risk assessment, which involves this conversation with officers, reviewing all needs, being alert to issues of minor effects. And that stays live until the point which we can call. What we do, and there's three bullet points on the left hand side, is there's a framework that's put in place. And that framework ensures there's consistency and application across all local and private. And we look at three areas. We look at financial sustainability. And that's essentially about how the authority pulls together this financial plan and budgetary control arrangements. So we'll look at the medium term financial, and we'll look at the assumptions that underpin that, and we'll make an assessment over whether we think the process of getting there. And the assumptions that's underpin that are appropriate. So we give you some assurance of controls and processes. We also look at aspects of governance, so that's about risk management, how it works. So papers that come to use a risk ratio to operate, whether we believe those operate. The last area is quite a mouthful, but essentially we look at performance management. How the authority pulls together its key indicators, puts them into a corporate and measures, and of course measures in place. As I said, we do not issue a conclusion whether the authority provides value for money. But by looking at those aspects, it gives yourselves as councillors, it gives the council and wider public assurance that the building blocks underpin are reliable and reliable. The remainder of the report goes into a few areas, but I, which is phase the independence. The important thing around independence is we do an ongoing check. We're appointed externally by an external authority that keeps us aligned, that maintains our independence. We do our own checks regularly, that can flow to you that there are no matters that we believe will be that independent. The last area that I would just, just give you some context around, sits in the back of the report. Page thirty-one talks about something called interality. I mentioned beforehand, we would not be able to look at every single transaction in the financial statements. So we make judgments based on, to quantify a figure of which we think the financial statements would be essentially misleading. And we do that based on formulas and qualitative judgments. So the figure that we would print yourselves is essentially a million pounds is what we think is interior of the financial statement. Anything over that, we believe, if someone thinks over that their work was wrong, we would insist on those numbers being just before, otherwise it would be qualified. Saying they can't be reliable. We also set lower thresholds, so for the authority, we find matters around thirty-two, thirty-three thousand would bring into your attention. And we look at a sliding scale, an accumulative scale. So if we find issues where areas above them, we report, we discuss with management, we come to a view of what they mean, we will see all of those. There's also certain aspects of the financial statements we think have particular interest. So members of the public or readers of the financial statements might be particularly interested in. And one of those is offices reading information, we think that's an area that would generate some interest. And we set a lower interality for. So we set, the natural state of disclosures around how much CROs have been paid was incorrect by five thousand pounds, and we think that would be the intention. So it allows us to refocus our work from big issues down to whether we think actually that level of written pounds is just much appropriate on the sales. And that's, that's as far as I can go on the report, again, it's more detailed than I would have gone through otherwise. But as we mentioned, it's quite helpful for context if you were, if you hear from us again, and we'll be saying on that plan, and you support that.
Thank you, Mark. And now we'll, thank you for, thank you for mentioning those, can I make any questions for the others? Councillor Dugan.
Thank you, Chair. This sounds all very good. So I assume places like working and government didn't have these quotas in place?
Can you watch these measurements?
Well, I mean, one assumes that people have been looking at these councils for a number of years. And would wonders, but how they manage to get into the dialogue space, I mean, if these sort of procedures are in place.
So I cannot comment on other organisations that are not separate auditors. What I can say is that we maintain regular dialogue with Chris Lee, and if we've got something to consider, we operate, you know, we will consider what action.
I had a reading coming from, but I think actually, we're talking about Washington and not only anybody else, but I don't want to say.
No, but we're talking about the efficiency and the effectiveness of the system.
And I think, I think Mark has explained that very clearly, I don't want people to say, I think that's a piece of that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I was trying to ask, is there a possibility, or is there any way for you to evade from the objectives or fees of this member adding? Just trying to think about how concrete is this document from this council.
So the planning process is always iterative. So we set this at the interim stage based on what we know at the moment. Should something come up, something new happen, then we adjust the plan. Our objective is to get to a conclusion that it is compliant with the rules. So if we believe I need to change the work strategy, do more work, for example. What will happen is ultimately, we have the conversation with finance, we've worked through all of that. Those are community, you'll get a report in, this is our plan, this was our plan, this is how we changed our plan, this is the outcome.
That's very weird.
Yes, thank you, Jim. We just made up somewhat towards a comment that councillor Dugan made. What level of sign off is the risk register? Is it officer level, is it cabinet level, or is it all council?
I'm going to drop that question, because that's more of a, that's more of a Chris Lee question, okay?
And if I can say, so the risk register goes to management team, it comes through to cabinets, and also it comes through to this own body as well. So you'll be reviewing the iteration of the council at this conference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. When it comes to your external experts, such as public valuations, things like that, obviously, you know, liaising with external clients. Is there a process within your remit to obviously change those? So you'd use, say, you've got Kia Business Services for your external borrower for pockets and assets. Would you then use an alternative one year of the following reports as opposed to just to get a different sort of influence?
So here do the council's valuations. And when it comes to watching those numbers, I have at my disposal, if I want to, my own valuation expert in the firm. Who will then look at what councils put forward, tell me whether they're reasonable or not based on the common assumptions. And if not, could do with a, could do with a just one. I don't need to deploy that expert at this point in time, I don't need to, because I think the skills, since we do all the work, we need the audit team. But it's always at my disposal.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. When I'm being asked to do a notice report, is there a way to get it noted?
There's going to be a.
Scans writing two, I would say, there's a graphic financial statement giving annual government statement in twenty-two, forty-three, and a previous report on the agenda. And we do present. So it's a very important one, but I don't get to know all these different people on that membership, apologies.
So following on from Mark's report, there is setting out what the auditorium approach then regarding your sort of accounting statement. This agenda is actually led to the strategy and subcommittee. It is the compilation of the financial data in thirty-first March, June, and fourteenth May, four twenty-three. And includes analysis statement, four statements, and, that's to see what kind of the training session we want to talk about financial statements. And these are the big statements that will be going to our committee, and I'm also going to touch on this especially to take their testing based on the strategy and then add in that market. Just want to, the points, so in one point three of the report, there's a data which has, we talked about, the council sign ways it can work on the week of July. There are actually some of the thirty-first May, which was the fourth required deadline, so Boston works at festival introducing start statement. We're on the deadline, and then the first month they then published on the first cycle of inspection. The audit is currently underway, and I mean, do you actually have a reading to use for the diary of our eyes? A bit marking institutions that are being, I don't know if I'm sponsored, but we. What's going to be, these are our statements, I mean, in front of all the contacts, we have a number of new members in the committee. When the audit statements are closed to meeting later in the fiscal year, we will host a review session. First that meeting where we will very further those audit statements review, identify the key issues, key items. Any changes that the person's been drafted up to be more than finalization purposes, and is, and to support your training currently. So that review session will provide you with hints and tips as to what your words, your type of things, and what sort of questions you should get seen of management as to the. Threat, so if we don't have these, we can't enforce the statement. And thank you very much for the questions.
Right, well, open the meeting for questions.
Good evening, Chairman, thank you for your time to speak. And you just laid out this timetable, things to be signed off, and owns, quality, et cetera. How does that, how are we pairing with the rest of the country? We ahead of them, are we the top ten percent, or are we in the bottom ten percent? Are we a good performer about to fall?
So the first Thursday deadline was fought forward by two months, so last year we had the first July, due to the council that was fought forward the first Thursday. And so the thirty-third, the twenty-second, we're going to have a deadline bottom that which again.
That's a good answer for you there, councillor Mellow, Jim?
I'm very impressed.
Oh, me too. Councillor Dugan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, can I just sort of check on understanding? And if you don't change fifty-five. So. The number's not in brackets, so what we thought. Yeah, and if we've got an under spend, we get a number in brackets, which is a positive number?
So items that are not in brackets, so on that top line, corporates, so we expect to spend two hundred and one thousand two thousand, and we call it certain area. The actual spend was two million, so therefore it wasn't under spent.
Yes, those assets were, we didn't say that. So the one that then confused is the one that's called non-service expenditure. Which seems not to be expenditure.
Yeah, sure, yeah, so that's A and B sum of so total and the number of books, so we. I mean, normally that would be a debit, I'm just, I'm only going to answer that's not in brackets, so.
Okay, so it is just that, what it is. So it appears that by the end of the thing, we underspent by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand pounds. But we seem to have lost quite a bit of reserves in the process.
So the twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a residual effect of government support was a COVID pandemic. So during the previous years, government supported the council through section four, section one of ours to offset sort of. Because we gave a number of business release to local businesses, but also that found that the council wasn't that, maybe this is, they didn't want it, they were leaving their business trace and identity. Therefore, the authority were confident that it is for that letting come. And that money was given to us in advance, we needed to sort of hold reserve, it's all to shine, it was requiring to roll down. And I think we got that, so I think when we're going to carry the party, forty million of their advances in the previous years, we are saying, oh, naturally higher. And so it's been the effect of those business rates from these people in the trading system.
They're sort of, they're sort of temporary, they're not as safe. They're sort of temporary reserves that is earmarked for something could happen.
Ordinary reserve are you saying is what's just the impact of those business rates from these due to the quickly.
Councillor Calwell.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I would just note on page forty-four, on the report approval, proof of publication. Good night, this is publication, is this approved for publication by yourself councillor, or the portfolio owner? I suspect it's just there on this slide.
Apologies, actually, we, the first book I will do, councillor Gosh, we will collect that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, so I've done my time here, and appreciate it. And right, the execute since this report, our members have detected the report is negative. Do you agree with me, Chair? The scans writing three, the day council agenda, is the written position statement as well to do the UHC. Let the, so take one to one of the board. Again, I ask for a moment to explain after this. One to all nine. One to the very back. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, so this, I'm actually very, very late for this night, so it's been Thursday, that nationally has been a lot of audit, local audit, that's how outstanding. I'm aware it's all parties, I think, I want to, but it's still outstanding, this is a, it was all the variety of fact, please. And I'm just sort of, we do an expedition very hard for Boston. hard for Boston. So, um, we have not here this night, results are the council's current several auditors, and their contract is due to come to land, and they're being taken, those national procurement expenses are taken by, except for all your appointments, and KPMG will be appointed as our external auditors from the third April next year. Regarding the sentences of previous audit, so, um, the twenty twenty one audit was completed twenty eighth March, twenty twenty two, so we currently have the twenty one, twenty two audit, and the twenty two twenty two audit, which is currently underway. I think, as I say, it's a lot of different, um, it's a number of challenges regarding this application skills, experience, and garden, and taking a progress audit, and this is being combined, I appreciate they're structurally, and certainly, the commission of audits, the same accounts. Twenty one, twenty two, um, statement will be presented until the thirteenth March, and we delegated authorities going to the section one five officer, and the chair permitted to approve if known material adjustments are required. Following the presentation of those, um, statements, I think it's all made there of a, um, national, uh, challenge on the pension salaration due to the, um, receipt of final reviews, and in essence, um, charge was that overnight balance sheet, the assumptions and opinion, the pension salaration had changed from the first March, first April, so we were advanced to receive updated, um, actual reports for the, um, pensions based on that new information. That report has been received, and we're currently in consultation, communication with the, with, with, the, 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 the. Amendments are required if any, so also that is why the twenty one, twenty two audit currently outstanding, there's also, um, Martin mentioned, any clearance and revision, that's a, the, um, revised presentation of, um, P S P S, the, um, the, 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 the council, so they're going to work with, so that's always the one situation, and they're going on the, 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 when you have collected, that's twenty one, twenty two, and it's also, so it's two, three statements. Um, as we see, the twenty two, twenty three statements have been published and are currently posted, so I think the, so for Boston, it's actually part of the position for its audit, um, matters in relation to, 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 so it's, it's from that national country, which is actually, uh, so
Thank you. Can I just ask, when do you think we're going to get this other one, the final one? Maybe just say the foundation, and you sort of, basically, I mean, you know, I'm not on for the, 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 every day we're going to get this sort of, sort of , before we train for it, this situation, I think, Mark.
I'm using a darn smart, what, discuss with you, please.
That's excellent, thank you very much, nobody's. Right, uh, thank you very much for that one. The report is small, I think, I think that's, I think, that's, 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 that's The Council's writing four now, the agenda, thanks, I'm glad you, the annual treasury management review starts on page one five three, and I'm sure we can get back to it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, apologies. No, that is, that's, that's, that's.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to release the annual treasury management review, I'm going to go second effect, okay? So this council is required by regulations issued under the Local Government Act two thousand and two, it would either handle treasury management review of active, active branch insurance, particularly in case of, for the two three. So this report needs requirement of both SEPA Code of Practice on Treasury Management and SEPA Position Code for Taxing Financing of the Service. So all required treasury reports have been submitted to audit and governance for review and scrutiny, including this report as part of the dedicated report. Member training on treasury management has not been undertaken during the year, however, profit and manager presentations have been provided during the year to support members who we have. We are in the section two, capital expenditure and financing, three, the council undertakes capital expenditure on long-term assets. This expenditure can be financed from the application of capital or revenue resources, and therefore has no impact on council borrowing or unfinanced thereby creating a borrowing requirement. The obtained budget for capital expenditure for twenty twenty three was six point two one million, and actual expenditure was three point seven four seven million. All the expenditure was financed or did not revert to an increase to the volume required. I'll put it down, capital expenditure and financing is shown, I can say, when you can keep it reported, but, uh, I hope you have seen that, everyone. So, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's a quick question. It says a two point five, a council's property fund, you said there's, these things are stupid questions.
Thank you, should have given a question on the quick break.
Council's property fund investment may have net contributions to council's twenty twenty three, but revenue account is six hundred and eleven thousand, and by net asset value, it's held by three point three million on the thirty first March. Is that something we should be concerned about, the fact that the, um, net asset value is held by three point three million? Is that likely to impact on the contribution that the fund makes in the forthcoming financial year? Your thoughts, Paul? Thank you.
Uh, yes, can you refer to the current record, we may report, well, and it's, it's the whole, but yes, in relation to property funds, in comparison with the value of the first March, uh, to, 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 paring by the first March, three, regarding those property funds, it all, I think, are already going down. Um, obviously, in previous years, that's the profit surplus of one point eight million pounds at that time, and investments in property funds in their whole nature are generally looked at as long-term investment. Obviously, we have to renew the investment on an ongoing basis, um, particularly in the impact of valuations, uh, and the strategy of council, which is to adopt, and also in relation to legislation changes, which may affect the benefit of maintaining investments in those type of investments. But, uh, yes, it's, it's not ideal, the point of valuations are going down, but over the long-term side of property, what we normally expect, I mean, the certain times we're getting confused, uh, we are at the bottom, and you're heading towards bottom, and you're a proper cycle, and we're going to start heading towards top, it's definitely behind us, mortgage, that mortgage, mortgages, house prices, they go up, they go down. In relation to your property funds, you receive revenue returns, uh, in a recent trip, from memories, in recent trip, then, we have borrowing to pay on the, um, we will be borrowing at two point four, two point, two point four seven five, which means you are making, uh, we gain excluding property fund valuations, which is, which is, that 's your capital combination. They are balance sheet transactions at the moment, and then if it's years, you will have the, 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 the.
Good to watch, though.
Yes.
Thank you, Shirley. Any other questions? Okay, so thank you very much for the, 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 the group. Thank you, the one. The Council's writing five in the agenda, the combined assurance report, which starts on page one seven seven, I'll ask John now to, uh, to, 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 to.
Thank you, Chair, leading members, um, you have, for you, the authorities are combined with your state for, for twenty twenty two, twenty three. This is a report that, um, looks assurance levels of our principal services risk of debt, cost, the authority, I think, and it draws on the, what's in the three lines, assurance model, where you look for assurance paid from your management, from external sources, and also from our internal sources, and that, those three things combined give us the combined assurance levels for each of the services that the authority provides. The actual portion is attached as a appendix A, and I'll just briefly take you through that. So on page, um, one eight three, you've got the three lines of defense model of time, I've just referred to, and then underneath that, you've got the overall assurance level that's been, um, received across all of the services, and you can see that spread from them, it's a system of a rat rating, a red under a green, and you'll note that the level of, um, assurance in each of it, which is relatively static, um, the past twelve months. As you go into the report, you'll see that, um, the next section on, finally, page, page one eight five, references to the council's strategic risks. Of course, you have a, another report later on in the agenda regarding the later strategic risks, so I don't intend to go through those, um, as part of this report, but those were strategic risks identified at the time of the report. We then go, um, into the next section, so the, the, the rest of the report's structured with, in, to reflect the directorates within the, um, organisation, so you have, first of those, the community director, you have a list of the services that are called in the director, their overall, overall assurance rating for activities in their director, and a list of their respective activities, and some commentary from the, to, to, to the director area. That method is followed through throughout the, throughout the reports, and on page one eight nine, you can have the, um, same information for corporate development director. On page one ninety, you have the information for program delivery, and siree director, and then on page, uh, one nine one, you have the information for growth director. Um, following that, there's a section that looks at the chief department working, provide, uh, sure, for, almost, uh, each, the partnerships that the council is involved with, and following section on page, page one nine three, taking through key projects, um, for the, for the authority. Final section of the report, the key partnerships, on page one nine four, and the emerging risks on one nine five. The exercise very much supports us in identifying all the authority and identifying, um, when it is, it is ration, um, around those key, key services, it's only for the support via the internal orders to support the process across the service areas, um, and it's used to help inform a future internal audit, but so it is the, the key component of our, um, governance arrangements. I just, it just wants to draw your attention to on page one. We've got the corporate development section, um, which is page one eight nine, the critical activity that was described as red list of this corporate governance, and that is an error, it should have been financial resilience, we just wanted to correct that, um, for members, um, uh, tonight, so that, that, of course, in the room. I'm quite happy to take any further questions, Chair.
What was the change there? Oh, that's good.
Yeah, page one eight nine, it's, uh, this is, it's described as corporate governance to, to, to the red act, to, to the financial resilience.
Financial resilience. Page one eight nine, this is corporate governance, it's financially related.
Great.
Other than any questions?
Ask anyone? Thank you, Chair. Got a few questions, mainly observations, I think, um, and like I said, there's lots of things, there's a silly question. On page one eight seven, um, critical activities, um, that we've got in the right right, the depot, um, diving down into sort of key messages, um, it's going on about the depot of obviously service vehicles, and vehicles need to be washed because the habitat is too small. Are we not exploring other options there, such as BT Fleet? BT Fleet has recently moved all their vehicles out in Boston, it's central to Boston, I know there is major contract with the gas ports, electric ports that use that, is that something that we are, are looking to, to utilise, um, now that they've moved out of there, that's a benefit? And then moving into page one ninety, um, we've got sort of the car parts, I've noted in there that, um, the, the football's down, uh, and the, well, the car parts running is an amber, is there any way that we could probably incentivize potential public and customers to come back into Boston by dropping revenues or dropping car parking fees first hour, um, to, to incentivize people to get a, a, along the, going on there?
Thank you. I'm sure there's a question, but, uh, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, thank
This, the first point I probably make is around the role of the trustee, the role of the committee, sort of process and procedure, not scrutinise services, so I'll just make that point. If what I would suggest on those two questions, that we ask people to go away, services to ask for questions, be circulated separately, um, to members, so you've got an answer on those points.
Just clarify the process to get the, 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 the.
So you've got a scrutiny process, so it, so what you could do as a committee, if you found something where you thought it was worthy of consideration by scrutiny, you might wish to refer the matter to scrutiny, so it wouldn't necessarily be the limo win X, scrutinising performance, for example, but you might wish to say to scrutiny, perhaps this is something you might take a look at. So it's being clear about what your role is, your, your role is to oversee, structure the procedure and processes of the council, its governance, to make, to give yourself as sure as it's functioning as it should, and if you have concerns about performance, they just need routing separately.
No, it's, 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 they have a, they have a, they have a, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm much, I'm, 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 just an, an observation, I guess, um, saying, as you mentioned, what you look at, sort of, see, and, um, when you look at sort of the local economy, or what I see, and, and commonly, which is struggling, uh, basically, to find, um, get demand, if you like, in other words, there's not as much money in town, as there may have been in the early days, let's say, twenty years ago, which is why, uh, in addition to the pressure coming from, um, the internet, we've seen a number of wholesale businesses close. I just wonder, given that we, we've got this identified on our, this register, will you not be actually, um, have any way of calculating what the aggregate, uh, spend, if you like, is in Boston, um, of all the various, uh, businesses that employ people? Because if you, as I say, my, 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 my observation, so you lived here for twenty years, is that there was a time when all the houses were occupied by working people, all were in well-paid local employment, um, and wages of those individuals were able to sort of get supportive, a very wide range of, um, businesses in that centre. What's changed over the years is that those businesses, we've got those industries gone, those businesses therefore closed, and I think the, the aggregate demand in that centre is depleted. These supply line models, which we're investing, I go some way towards, if that's the problem, but I think the problem is basically my, 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 the supply. That makes sense, I've been explaining a little bit, but, but, but.
So again, that's a matter that you might wish to refer to scrutiny, your, that sort of data does exist, so we, we can get economic data, um, that looks at what the economic position was twenty years ago, and what the economic position is now, but that, again, would be a matter of scrutiny to explore that question, but we will similarly root that question to officers.
Yeah.
For them to provide a response, and that's, I mean, it is something whereby, again, you may wish to review your scrutiny process, if this is something you wish to feed in.
Thank you, um, how's that?
Can I, that's it, go.
That's fine, I was, I, thank you very much, Kevin, I was, I was just going to say as well, those, those sort of matters could be raised with the, with cabinet members and the legal providers, but, but that type of information, you know, very much is in there, um, decision-making powers to look at, you know, how, so, or, so, where we've got, if you think it can basically raise with scrutiny, or can be raised directly with the, with the, um, for, for holders, to, to identify that, and I think the other observation probably happens that your local knowledge is reflecting probably what we're identifying here as an answer, so obviously, maybe it's sure, it's about the local knowledge is matching up with what, with what we've got in the reports, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Well, yeah.
Thank you, Sir Chair, I just want to come back, I was going, you know, let's, council mountain, let's talk about car parts, we had an issue with the car parts since the Covid, we used to have to, to, three part times working, you know, as partner tenants, one of them was taken, and then one of them passed away, one of them got sick, and then we haven't got anybody to look after our parking, you know, spaces and the machines, and some of the machines, and we give an example, I think, uh, Stoner Street, it wasn't working for a while, so people didn't want to pay, so we didn't get any money from that. Now, I think there's
Now, I think there's two new parking attendants, and I would like to see what the first three months brings to us, and how much money we're going to make, because the town centre, usually, fairly always sees these four cars all the time, so I will wait for this amber, you know, colour to come back, and I think we will see probably a change, because we have two parking attendants, which is, they are working now, basically, every day in the week, so hopefully we'll see some change. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, we have to come.
Just a general inquiry, is, do we actually have a process when we are identifying a risk or whatever that we want to give to scrutiny, is there a process that we go through to do that, or is it just a case of coming out of the air and say, Fred, give so-so ring and get that on the agenda the next time?
Something like that, that's up for us?
Yes, you can probably get very good committee, or you can raise it through the scrutiny protocol as a member, so we will do present the relevant scrutiny committee to consider.
What we used to do basically is the chairman of the, all the governors can refer to the chairman of the EP, or the other scrutinises, and, you know, it's just a matter of communication, then we can work with some other companies, I think it's all up to others, councillors, what you want to know.
I think we will notice all those items going forward, when we take it forward.
Thank you, Chair, it's your sort of information, Corporate Community will be holding a workshop on its future work programme sometime in August, I mean, I'm more than happy for any member of the field to attend that, if they want to, you know, suggest work programme. So when, when we work out the day, I'll make sure that all members are ready.
Thank you. Just, just, I think with the community, just, just, and probably what the short, maybe you should, or... What's that, sorry, sure, it's, it's, you know, what a short, three, could you?
That's us, Chair, so, so that's what we're calling ourselves, the short and audit provider, I know that, but we'll be giving that a lot. So, yeah, the shortest thing to share is your internal audit provider.
Just in case there were any clear, yeah, yeah, gorgeous, thanks, Chair. Although, how should we move on? Right, okay, I've reported to a note, so we're happy? We agree, very good. Right, page six, and then there's the internal audit under report, starts on page one ninety seven, if I've got the right person to start, because I've easily made, like you said, you did them, so if you have, we just ask you future, if anything, changing, changing by a little script, you make sure that people know, if we're naming that, is somebody ever popped up in their place, and it looks like I'm not with it, or asleep or not, so, is Matthew reading this report now?
Yes, Chair, yes, thank you, welcome, welcome to the committee, thank you. Thank you, Chair, but, evening, everybody, it's not that long ago, is it, that I think we took the training, and one of the things I took through was the key reports that will come to this committee, and these reports are really helpful guide from your terms of preference, and sort of the purpose of the committee and the purpose of internal audit. So if I take page two hundred of the pack, that, then this is the purpose of our annual report, and it gives instructions, and it gives you levels of assurance that we're giving this year. So in March twenty two, we've got an annual plan to the committee, that's a systematic risk-based plan that we developed, this is the result, the end result of that plan, so all the work we've done throughout twenty two, twenty three is recorded in here, all the work that we do goes into informing our opinion on the council's governance and internal control framework, so that's, there's no work that we're going to do that won't end up forming part of our opinion, or being reported to the committee. I'm saying the majority of this report, and our opinions, is based on that work that we do, i- if we come across other matters during our core demand idea and the work that we do, we will pick those up and put those in as well, the majority of it is based on the audits that we've done for you, that, that testing, and that probing, as independent objective auditors we do for you, on your internal control, your governance, your risk management, and your financial control. So just taking you back to page two hundred, then, the purpose of the annual report, clearly set sound, it's our opinion on the overall advocacy and effectiveness of the council's governance, risk and control framework, and, and this, this is how we present that to you, and I'm hoping that you should agree, clear you, and as I go through the report, you can see the rationale, you can see the work that we've done, and how we've come to these conclusions. What we do, so, internal auditors will do this differently, some might just give one opinion for the whole council, we break it down into the four opinions that you see, so there's governance, risk, internal control, and financial control. We have, I should have looked at it here, and I haven't, but basically, the options are performing well, performing adequately, or improvement needed. Just a quick update on this term adequate, that's just the financial audit term, that kind of means really satisfactory, reasonable, I think some people don't like the term adequate, but it's not a bad place to be, it's all, that's okay, and you'll see there, you've got basically all three of the options that we've got, and I'm going to go through the report and discuss with you what's gone into that and how we come to those opinions. So I'll just take you to the next page, two hundred and one, so this is all under the governance heading, and really, this just talks about some of the key things that have come to our attention, apart from the actual audits that we've done for you throughout the year, and one of the key things that's really fed into the governance opinion and the financial control opinion, is, is some of this, some of the issues around public sector, and their ability to provide financial support for the council. So this is something that's come to our attention throughout the year, that there's been some soft turnover in, in that area, and it is a difficult, as the report says later on, it's great to improve to area, that's quite a national issue, that's across a lot of professions, not just finance, all sorts of professions across local government. And what, what's encouraging, of course, is the, we know, because we sit on SLT meetings every month, which is really a part, actually, of the council's governance, the internal audit that they have, we've seen that the council senior leadership team, and PSBS team, the senior leadership teams are working very closely on this, and it's something that's always under review, and it's always being worked out, and there's action plans that are in place, there's things that happen to address it, but we noticed it during the twenty two, twenty three year, there were some impacts to that slight loss of financial capacity and capability, and again, I, I know that the SPS might have a recruitment lately, appointed two really good financial professionals to come and help them out, and they've got that local government background, I know that the SPS are currently out for recruitment for the financial bases that they have, so they're still seeking to improve their capacity and capability, but these things are moving forward. And you'll see on the second column, there's a paragraph in bold, so what we will do in this report, as well as reporting our opinions, if you think there's any significant issues that we want to raise, and then we want the committee to have further oversight on them, we will make a recommendation, so that, that's on the other page, two hundred and one, is our first recommendation, and what we're saying is that the, basically, the actions that have been taken to address this are reported back to the audit governance, so you get to maintain an oversight on what we're saying, we think this is a significant issue, we've seen some impact of this throughout constituency three, that will come back. And just a quick note, the, the annual governance statement is, is something you might only see once or twice a year, so what we're also recommending here, is that anything we recommend as an action to go into that, you get a more regular update, so you won't have to wait for the annual governance statement to come, I think there'll be an action plan coming to this committee on a more regular basis, so the committee's got oversight on what's happening with these issues that we phrase. I think, following page two hundred and two, then just talk to it further about the governance side, I think it's just in detail, again, about the work that we've done, and part of our assessment, and actually, this one makes reference to external audit statements that they've made previously, there's one there about, so the first one at the bottom of page two oh two, on the first column, it's a statement from external audit, and it's asked, that's about the council taking steps, and we should re-establish the arrangements on starving, and you'll see at the top of the second column, there's one about your housing benefits as well, which we'll cover a bit later on in the report. So again, what we've done, you'll see at the bottom of page two hundred and two, in bold, is we're making a recommendation around what I just discussed, that there's, there's really clear reporting on this for the committee, and you get a regular update on these actions. And then if I could just take you to page two hundred and four, so that's where we move to the risk elements, so this is assessed as performing well, we've done a recent audit on, on risk management here, that was very positive, we made some suggestions and recommendations of councils doing, speeding into its policy and its refresh of risk management, overall, we gave a good level of assurance on that, we're doing further audit testing on that in twenty three, twenty four, we're also looking at the fraud risks from the council, updating whether we're doing that, your strategic risk register will come regularly to this committee, so there's really good oversight on that, and the council is developing a partnership strategic risk register, so all in all, we're quite happy with risk, with risk management, and that's why it's got that performing well assessment. Page two hundred and five is around internal control, and what this does is list the areas that we've audited during the year, and it gives you the assurance level that we've given, and again, you'll see a majority of the work has got a high or substantial level of assurance. On the first column, there's three items involved there, the ICT project management is still being finalised, so although we've listed that as limited, we're actually still going through that process, and when that's done, we'll bring that final update to the committee, but you can also see there that housing benefits subsidy was limited, and payroll without reconciliation was limited, there were no lower insurance payments the last year, the majority, you've got a good assurance level on, and we're just highlighting those two, possibly three, who have limited assurance. I think I'll just take you to page two hundred and eight, so this leaves a bit of background around our assessment of the financial control, which is the one where we said improvement is needed, and again, now I'll just try to summarise for you, but quite clearly, we've got some of these issues, but also the way that managers, management teams are working together to address that, and again, we speak about it's difficult areas to improve, but there is some progress on that, to improve that financial capacity and capability to support the council. And then again, the following page, page two hundred and nine, that lists the financial areas that we audited last year, and it gives you those assurance opinions, and again, we highlighted the two limited ones there, whenever we do a limited or no assurance report, we will then follow that up again in twelve months' time, so it doesn't just, it's not something that we're just identifying as there's potential gaps in the control environment, or there's risk involved in that area, as well as that, we will circle back, nor be in twelve months' time, we'll check it again, and we'll bring that report back to the committee, as committee members, you will get to see the journey that these, these perhaps lower assurance areas take, and also, you'll be looking for our follow-up review to have a better level of assurance, but again, you will get to see that, it doesn't just get reported once, and then disappear off the radar. Page two hundred and ten, it is key, so again, we make a statement here, we see the second column, restriction on scope, but for internal audits work for you, we need to have an effective relationship with the audit committee and managers and officers of the council, we also need to have unfettered access to records and people, if we don't get that, this is where we tend you, so that can happen, I've never come across it here, but it could potentially, we could be restricted in what we do, management can try to drive us to certain areas, that's not how internal audit should work, we need that access, but like I say, if there were any issues, this is where we can raise that review of the committee, but I'm pleased to say there weren't any. And just finally, Chair, page two hundred and eleven, which is absolutely difficult work for you, so, we did a key control of housing benefits in Austin this year, for twenty two, twenty three, which was limited assurance, we also do housing benefit subsidy for you, which is on behalf of, I think, external audit, we carry out testing, and that basically is, is another way of assessing the accuracy of housing benefit claims, and again, for this year, it was limited, for twenty two, twenty three, it's limited assurance on that, and it was also limited assurance in the previous year, so we're raising that as an issue, and you'll see our final recommendation at the bottom of page two hundred and eleven, again, about actions to address that on that to the audit committee. I would just say, the random test subsidy we do the previous year, so all of this limited assurance relates to when the housing benefits was in-house at Austin, the SPS do it now, but this relates to the time before they were doing that, and relates to the in-house Austin thing. Sorry, just a final final, page two hundred and twelve, it's just, again, if you want to know that we are audited, so if someone does audit your auditors, we are quality assessed, and we have to comply with the public sector internal audit standards, we had that assessment in December twenty twenty two, please report that we fully conform to the requirement. And Chair, that's it for me, I have to say, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew, can I just go back to page two hundred and five, you talked about the ICT project, and if you possibly give us an insight what, what that issue is, because it's a lot to say, you know, but, can I have a bit more detail on that?
Do you mean about what we're finding, Chair, and why it's limited? No, I, I'd have to go back and check what's in the report, but, but it'd be based on the findings that we've got, and the risk we think associated with those areas, so essentially, we'll test controls around that ICT process, if, if we think we're finding some gaps in those controls, or some risks that are involved in that, then, then we'll report that, and, and that will, that will inform our assessment in terms of a positive or negative level of assurance.
I'm going to clear the fact this up, but I'm just, I'm just curious to know, you know, a little more detail on that, the same thing with, you know, you know, the housing benefit, I can, they're always, you know, city policy.
What, what you'll see, so, this is a summary of the work we've done here, what you will see throughout the year is whenever you get a limited assurance, you'll get a full version of that in our progress report, so it won't be hidden from you. In terms of this, I think the housing benefits subsidy, we found quite a lot of errors when we did the testing, and, and one of the things was, every year, you reset the parameters for what people get paid into what they can claim, some of those parameters were not set correctly, therefore, throughout the year, some claims were not being paid correctly.
Are we going to have a penny all the time, that way?
No, no, there's under payments, over payments, there's that, but what it is, is an error.
Right, thank you for that.
That's a decent, that's a reasonable.
Thank you, Chair, no, actually, questions, just two comments, the first is, can I, well, it's part of the report, one, it's really nice it's in print, like, and clearly, that can be, that I can understand, the kind of the hand, you probably can.
Right, come back for lunch, Chair, yeah, yeah, you're welcome to say that, we can speak as long as you like. Thank you.
Well, it's, she's not going to be long, we're going to, that's about, that's about.
Thank you, Chair, just looking at last time, and like you say, it's in really nice simple English, appendix two, I've just got a couple of questions, how sort of it happens, outline below the areas that have been removed from the original plan, and then during the year, you've been requested to do additional work, what sort of trigger points are they from, is that from the cabinet, is it internally itself, and where did that come from?
So, so I have regular meetings on with section one, part one, officer, and I attend SLT, with executive access, if, if something is looking like it's an urgent risk to the council, then we will have a discussion about whether we need to include that in the audit plan, I think the thing is, we've, we set an annual plan at the start of the year, but risk doesn't stay still, and it doesn't come stick to that, so all it really is, is we've built in some flexibility, that you can change, we can adapt as risks arise, and again, when we make changes, we'll report that through to the committee, so you've got a view on that, and nothing is given from it. Thank you.
Okay, so, come forward.
There's a going.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, if I ask the officers, when this internal audit is completed, and we get this report, is there a timeframe you give for implementing the recommendations on the audit, and this year will this be done before the external audit?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that question, yeah, every audit report we do, if we make findings, we then get management agreement on the date we implement that finding, one of the key things you'll see in the progress reports, and one of your, your, your key activities is this committee, is to keep an eye on whether those are being done when they're said they've been done, and if not, why not, and we will report that to you, so every time we do a progress report, we run a tracker on all the recommendations that we've made against the date when it should be done, any that have passed. Any that pass that day will report to you. So you'll be able to see that. And I think one of your key activities would be perhaps to ask, why isn't that being done? And any issues or what it will do. Thank you. Go to that.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want you to make it simple because we have PSPS, which is either some finance, as well, you look up to the HR. Now, okay. And yeah, we're creating, we're recruiting at the moment. Then we have your several astronauts, basically, leadership, you know, through a team. And then we have the Mazas, which we carry as one audit. And that's just what you say. And we have our office in S151. How the order works within the council, who's watching who and who is working. I agree that you are working together. So who is on your top? Who is the person who has to work the ladder? So who's controlling the businesses around? Because it seems to be so many, I'm not going to say anything. I mean, so many departments and how do you work? Who has the priorities and who's the boss?
Thank you.
Oh, you must go ahead, Chris.
So you have, I'm sure, the running of the organisations, the running of the organisations that are seen by management team of the council. What has happened historically is the council's decided to outsource some of their in-house functions into PSPSL. So you have some of your in-house functions that you might normally have in, within the organisation, in externalised company. So that's why we have colleagues from PSPS here, all of your treasury, your payroll. Although some is not HR, you've got HR, you've got IT, you've got KIRMA, all of it within the PSPS complete envelope effectively. Then you have your governance framework. And with your governance framework, you have to have an internal auditor and you have to have an external auditor. So they, to a certain degree, are making sure we have risk governance, where we also have a monitoring officer, who is here from an internal perspective, checks and balance, making sure we're conforming to all of that. So we do all work very closely together. We have an SLT once a month that just looks at governance effectively. So we sit down and discuss how it's going, we've got finances, we've got controls and processes. We look at where we are on audits and any other high-risk areas, we look at performance, we look at rates. So that's quite good practice. But it is, I agree, it's quite a complex way of working, but we are a large organisation. So if you were a company, you would still have internal quality assurance and you would still have external auditors. So and you'd have your in-house finance professionals. So they are same, just slightly bigger teams are doing slightly different things. And we do things that companies don't do, like benefits, you know, council tax support and all sorts of other services that we provide. So hopefully that drives a place there.
Thank you. Oh, you're next to me. My other question, because when you took the recruits, Astrid was leading the show, and who is watching the debate? Who is in the back? Our council.
Sorry. So obviously, one of the, one of the problems we have at the moment is the markets of people who are supposedly qualified as outside. And indeed, I suspect Mazzars and auditors will compete in the, in the market with potentially qualified auditors. Similarly, we may compete for accountants. So and accountants and auditors sometimes cross over in terms of skill sets and areas of expertise. And the reality is the market out there is really difficult at the moment. What we are, what working with PSPS is around in the investment in terms of recruiting within ourselves, looking at how we grow people who wish to learn finance and to be audit. And I'm sure the audit team's looking at people like auditors and training them because it is just so difficult to recruit. But what we'll say is that in a local authority context, it doesn't take a long time to train people. It's not the same as a private sector accountant can't come easily into a local authority setting. Because you, as you commented yourself, the start of the dividend, it's all a little bit different. It's not a profit and loss. So there are, the balance sheet looks completely different, the valuations are all completely different. So they're all complexities. So we are indeed all competing. In terms of the bill, obviously, Mazzars is a company and the council council are a company. We will pay the bill for the services we receive from those organisations. So when you pay for PSPS, the services they provide us. And similarly, you'll see quoted in the Mazzars report, the fee that is nationally set, that's a national procurement. And that sets that pay and then similarly, in terms of your internal audit service, so they, we will pay for our chargeable service, if you like, as well as the Boston, and that's embedded in the.
I don't think we're refreshing before. No, I think we've mentioned about that. Although we're talking about telling you, maybe you want to join. So let's move on and go. Any more questions before we move on? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. This report is noted only on the overall agree. Thank you very much. Sidewise and seven, this is the local government corporate governance. And you remember earlier on, John, you copied us. So John, you have to put this.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'll refer to the update revised here. It is best practice for local authorities to set out local corporate governance. That's in line with as practices recommended by CIPR. The corporate governance that we have set out for you aligns with the good principles as identified by CIPR for corporate governance and local authority. So there are seven days and a list that is set to a report from A to G. I won't go through more, Chairman. In the appendix, you can then see how we map across the governance arrangements that are in place for this authority against each of those corporate, against each of those principles and subcategories beneath them. So this is a report that certainly that sets out those arrangements. It is constitutionally, Boston, for the council to approve this. So what we're looking for tonight, any comments or observations from the from the committee and then a recommendation to move forward, the council to adopt the organisation, the vice president, the corporate governance. The head of the council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, John. Any other comments on that? Any questions, comments? How's your nation?
Following on from my comment on the figure, I want to have small. And doesn't actually make any difference.
I'll see, I'm just going to make sure I'm being pretty, so we can all see. Any other questions at all? If not, I'll cancel your question.
Can you use your microphone?
Can you put your microphone on, Captain?
Yes, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Some of these issues sort of fuzzy my head.
I'm just wondering whether there are any definitions of openness, integrity, movement to ethical values? How do we define it?
Well, I think they're taken by the meaning that they have in English, in the language around openness and integrity. I think that's quite well established. What those, what they mean, that's what that's the meaning. And we were quite few.
But in many respects, these are sort of terms that generally speaking, of course, of law, a proper definition. Because, you know, the definition didn't get out of the dictionary, may not be sufficient to determine whether or not somebody is acting with, for example, integrity or within ethical values. But that's my, my personal opinion. You can't really avoid it. I'm not suggesting we go and we worry and try and navigate them very specifically. I'm just trying to get to the point where there's an acknowledgement that some of these terms are a little less precise than we perhaps imagine they are when we look at living in a government like this.
Yeah, I think if I could just give some background context, because quite often we talk about ethical integrity, we're often talking about the mental code of conduct and the standard to make and stuff by ZU, ZU Council. So this, this council's adopted the Local Government Association Model Code of Conduct for councillors. And that sets out the expected behaviours and the, those standards that you would expect from working in public office. And there's a specific guidance document that supplements that. So I think I'd probably prefer to that in person. Quite share a copy or a link of that to you so that you can see more detail, how those are, how those conduct, the expected conduct and how that sets out in the heading, what will be expected of members. So I think that's probably the best thing I could do.
This is. Yeah. I'll ask you a question, if you can make this.
There's some quite good guidance on, on the government website in terms of the known principles, where they go into the little bit more detail, a little bit more. If you like, that's what they need by the time you get the papers.
Yeah, I'd be interested. If you get that show, I'm sure that will satisfy some people's curiosity. Would you sit there or not?
Yeah, no, I'm happy with what we've presented, very much with contributions.
Thank you, Chair. Just going into, obviously, there's some revisions to the documents, which obviously we've been going through and we've updated. Obviously, we discussed that once it goes through the board, you know, it'll be version 1.0 and any amendments to the actual document would then change. I'm just trying to get my head around how the council and the officers work on a unpublished document. Ex military, we always used to have UP to the side of it and we always used to work with low numbers. So it would be 0.01, 0.02 for every amendment, just so we know which documents we are on.
If you want to respond to that, thank you.
Yeah, so in the, we're making the same 100% use in military, but we'll have the version control. So we'll have a 1.1 or a 1.2 and the date won't be the same. So we'll be able to refer back to it and we'll record what's changed from the document from three days earlier.
That I understand would obviously be the main documents when they're published, on and about you, while you're working on these documents. Say if you're a 20-storm team, all working on one document and the document's updated with bits going in, how is that wrapped?
Yes, so there's normally be an anger of a document that's pulling that together and maybe to keep the agency for comments if they were coming in, keep a record of, of those updates that they made through. So sometimes I'll be buying track changes provided to the office and now keep the records, make sure there's ownership of the final, the final political related.
Thank you very much. Can I, can I move forward? I've prepared it for you. I think there's another question on that one. Can I have a second of these? Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number eight.
We've voted.
Or maybe we've voted, sorry. I'm getting some kind of red title in my head. Have we all voted on that? Are we all in favour? Any against? Thank you. Apologies about that, sir. Right, number eight, risk management. I think you are, Sidhav. Of course you are. I know you are. Thank you, Sidhav. Over to you.
Thank you very much. And this is a regular update that you will be seeing on risk management. So we might expect to need to cover this all tonight. We've had a little bit of discussion already about risk management, but basically, what we're looking at is things that might go wrong for the council. So we look ahead, what might stop us from delivering our corporate priorities, what might stop us from delivering our services. And those are the lists that we'll identify, but also on the website, our community. So we want to manage those as well. So you have some assurance as a committee that those risk management interventions are in place. And that's the careful criticism call. So that's a bit of background about policy, the procedures that we have in place. I've put more detail in than I usually would in this as a report for anybody who would like to read through that, but I won't go into detail tonight. What we have got, as I mentioned earlier, is a draft policy, which the auditors have had a look at. They've given us some really good feedback on that draft policy that we're working through at the moment. So we'll be able to bring that draft policy to you at your next meeting that goes through in more detail and exactly how that policy works. But for the timing, the reporting going to be, explains that we have a strategic risk register in place. That booking at the risk that might stop us from delivering our corporate priority. The same services have operational risk load issues, so they look at things that may not, may get in the way of delivering things or opportunities. And they're all listed there in detail is in the report there. I would say don't worry too much about the scoring, there's a lot of detail and they're about scores. But the most important thing that we're doing is to be able to prioritize them. So the purpose of the score is we spend more time looking at the risks that are more likely to happen and have a higher impact as opposed to those that are less likely to happen and have a lower impact. So the priority for us is to look at those high risks and what we want to do about them to manage those risks. You'll see it 1.4 as well, as I've mentioned, we're working on a partnership risk management as well. So where we have risks that are common across the three organisations, we would love to manage those, what is strong and what is weak. But only where there is that commonality. So we'll again bring that to you to your next meeting, the policy and the partnership risk register. And then 1.5, just another mention of the corporate governance, can you? So we've talked earlier about the assurance that you have that risk management is in place and effective. So every corporate, at the existing director, gets their sort of performance and risk and to go through those, so it's gathered Italian shows, to update mitigations, to identify new risks and traffic rates if there's risk happening. So there's a lot of detail in the report and I'm conscious this may be the first time that you've seen the report. It will come to be regularly and that will make, give you that assurance as we move along. A panic A is the strategic risk studies for itself. So if you have any questions about that, again, as we've talked about earlier, the all three members of the committees to make sure that risk management is in place, it's not necessarily in compliance itself. But if you have questions, I'll be happy to take those away or take them.
Thank you, Sidhav, for the report. Any other questions?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This could be, and you don't need to go into much detail, but under risk one, economic hardship. And by political pressure, you mentioned, is that this political pressure by elected politicians or is all pressure by the council and the political pressures?
That's a good question. And around the economic hardship, it's a bit more around policies that, but I think I don't see all this.
That'd be much appreciate. And you think, Councilor?
Yeah, just, just curiously, we had a discussion at full council.
A bit of microphone.
Curiously, we had a conversation at full council on Monday about an externally funded scheme proposed to Milfins who the possibility of it working in health. Just wondering whether 11, which has been struck out, would be something that's fallen under, that would fall under 11 on the risk register now, would we actually not be externally funding something like that project?
Yeah, thank you. And the reason we spoke about it is because it is very similar to the capital program that was. So usually if external funding comes in, it will be minus from that way. So we found that it's a duplication. But that risk is still there and it's still combined by that one.
Any other questions? Let's move on. Thank you very much, Sidhav. That's his report for the energy only. On your week. Very thoughtful, very much. Next one, item 90 now, we're recruiting a couple in November. I've got a hard copy that's a bit of a need. It's sold out.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. As members will be aware, the committee's membership made of eleven members, but also a independent member of this authority in the previous members, the office came to, came to answer. We have a point where we're looking to recruit any members. So this report is asking really the three things. It's, it's setting out the recruitment package, the group pack. And asking for any feedback that you've got from that package before we. that you've got from that pack before we advertise the position. Secondly, it's asking you to consider whether three members of this committee would like to sit on the interview panel, part of that recruitment process. And then thirdly, it's asking you to consider whether you'd like to recommend to full council that a second independent member be co-opted onto the committee in line with SIP's best practice. So there are three elements, Chairman, for you to be on to.
Do you want to raise any question or other open, meaningful questions or observations? Let's go, yeah.
My question, what's the criteria? Does the person have to have some knowledge of appointments or anything else?
Yeah, so the, the pack, we're doing the recruitment pack, we've set out a person specification. So we are looking for someone who is independent of the organisation, that's the key part, an independent member that they have no affiliation with the council. And secondly, we are looking for someone who has some expertise in the matters that come before the, before the committee. So we've got a good understanding of internal, external audit, risk management, corporate and financial governance. So there's a person specification set out. There's also a section for eligibility for appointment, which in another way, in a certain way, in there would be disqualification for not being eligible for the, for the, for the appointment. So we, we clearly know there's that in the group pack.
Did everybody, everybody have a chance to read that? Because we, we want to see that. You have no other chance to read it?
The emails to us.
Or you have, you have. A few in Asia, would you? Well, it makes you have a lot of chance to read it.
Oh, if you bother.
That's nice.
As regards to obviously the positions, it's looking at one at my own potential, two positions. Obviously, it's best practice to have two people. However, with obviously the recruitment issues that we are facing at the moment, what is your expected outcomes if we did go and see?
That's a really good question and one which is, is difficult to give any guarantee that we would recruit two, three, four individuals. I can talk from experience that another authority with a partnership who have been able to recruit to the position in the past have managed to recruit two individuals of, of that, of that quality and, and, and that met the requirements for that committee was looking for. So there's a reason to expect that we, there's a potential to recruit two individuals, whether that happens straight away, whether that requires, you know, the recruitment processes and re, you know, re-advertising. I guess only time will tell, but arrange to advertise widely in the right, the right areas to try and attract individuals for this. Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. I actually see that the opportunity for one of you once again to, to, to find us in the, in the working in the council, which can all, as that, that you know, is the one I also think possibly might be someone who is hired and maybe wants to, you know, they know what they're doing on the full time, you ask them or shut the council. It's, it's that sort of thing where somebody might want to come along and say, well, I'm, I'm interested. I think it is quite an interesting role, certainly two independent people would add value to, to this committee. We're not, we're all councillors, these people are outsiders and they're actually independent. So I think they have a lot of value, very benefit and also then not one effect particularly coming through the door as well, same time. So, you know, I think it's a possibility we should get to. And it's not a full count, I think, like, I mean, certainly times again.
Oh, it's it.
Yeah, the one of two. We actually, they're allowed. Well, any more questions? Charles, very soon.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I could just ask a question. Um, the, the ending of the service for the previous member, was that a sudden thing? Did we know?
That individuals' points, if return office, not return office came to them.
So why didn't we start looking for one before?
And I think it provided an opportunity for the new council to look at that potentially coincided with the end goal, the previous council. So by just in the time period, this new committee, we have a lot of.
Because we started looking to look, we had this now. And anyway, leave it aside. And could I propose that we do recommend to the council that we have two independent members reliable, that they could report and that we accept the scheme for the political group, yeah, members, member of the members.
Yes, we're looking for, it's looking for a proposal for the report, the two people and also, you know, everyone is checking, you have to do that.
I'm going to go.
As a, this is, and pass them out. Right, okay, from the member, all in favour? Anybody against? Or can I just take a toll? Yes.
Chair, we consider the membership of the panel as well at this very time.
It's hard.
So look, we were looking for three members to support that recruitment process. The month before, we thought we would have need volunteers through the committee. So you think we'll be trying to do.
Okay, I'll have you sit on the, on the, on the table. Everybody else, yours.
My question.
Can I have a question?
Can I have a question? Well, I mean, because of course.
Yeah, I don't think you have a future that you're, you're more further up. Unfortunately, I have to buy on this occasion. But take, but take, yeah. One, two, three. Do we have that?
Three.
Thank you. All in favour of that? Do we have that?
Yeah, we have.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll move forward. Item 10, is the work programme, it starts on page 25. Anything on that?
No, Chairman, the work programme, the work programme was before this coming here. If those comments weren't, I could say any question members might have.
Any question on item 10 on the work programme? Just wanted to note, Jim, just to know, am I very happy with that? Do you think you know, James? Lovely. Item 11, on the agenda, seeing that there's exclusion from the good press. On YouTube. Okay, you'll argue that the council, second. So you have a proposal for.
On the point of all, Mr. Chairman, could you please move a motion?
Of the business, yeah. The section 108 for the local government act 1172, that's a publicly excluded from the meetings of the following item on the ground, that if they were present, they would be disposed to them. Same information defined in paragraph three, part one, straight control, react to the main. Do you have a problem?
So you, you proposed it.
I started on it.
And you have a second, you do. Apologies there. All in favour of that?